Okay, I see it's one thirty-two. And I know Mr. Hagan yonurly gives the, uh, gives the television a thirty-second heads-up, I think. Yeah, all right, we're good. Okay, we'll call the zoning board of appeals for the city of West Palm Beach, November third, twenty twenty-two meeting to order. And, uh, Ms. Kirkwood, if you could call the roll, please.
Michael Wood. Let the record show, Michael Wood is not here. Alfred Fields?
Present.
Jonathan Burgess?
Present.
Christopher Cammer?
Present.
Christopher Hagan? Let the record show, member is not here. Michael Hyman?
Present.
Dana Picotte?
Present.
Samuel?
Thomas.
Samuel Thomas? Please excuse me, sorry.
Okay, so the next on the agenda is for the pledge of allegiance. If everyone would rise, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the, the approval of the minutes from the September first, twenty twenty-two, um, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Provided as part of the packet, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion.
Second motion to approve.
Can't believe it. I'm sorry, who, who, uh, filed, who made the motion?
Jonathan.
Jonathan, Mr. Burgess, okay. Ms. Kirkwood, could you, um, just call a vote on that? It was seconded by Mr. Fields. There's a motion to approve the minutes.
Yeah, Ms. Kirkwood, if, if you could just call each board member that is in attendance, and then they will indicate their vote of yes or no. Thank you.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Christopher Cammer?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan? Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Dana Picotte?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the report from the planning division staff.
Good afternoon, John Roach, principal planner for the city of West Palm Beach. Just to give a brief update, um, for November third, first, uh, and most importantly, want to welcome our new ZBA board member, Ms. Dana Picotte. Uh, she will serve as the ZBA's second alternate. Um, so in that instance, in which there are two regular members who are unable to vote for any reason, rather absence or recusing themselves, um, she would step in along with the first alternate. Or if there is one voting member who is unable to participate, and for some reason, Mr. Burgess is unable to step into that voting role, Ms. Picotte will serve as a voting member, but, um, she is certainly encouraged, and, uh, we're excited to have her included in all discussion of all cases and so forth, so, um, she comes to us as a licensed realtor with Compass Florida, uh, and she has a bachelor's of business administration from UMass, and, um, we're excited to have her here, so, um, welcome, and, uh, look forward to your participation, so. Uh, second thing, just as part of your minutes that you saw before, we just need to disclose that there was, um, the conflict of interest form provided by Mr. Burgess from the previous meeting, which he disclosed and recused himself from an agenda item due to a business conflict, so we just need to make that declaration, that that was included within there, um, but everything is good there, so that concludes staff updates, and if you have any questions, happy to, otherwise, we can continue through the agenda.
Okay, the, the next item on the agenda is the remarks by the chairperson. The, the matters before the zoning board of appeals are quasi-judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicants will make a presentation and answer any questions from the board. The applicant will then be followed by city staff, who will provide a presentation, a recommendation to the board, and then answer any questions. Members of the public will then be given the opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance of today's meeting, emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. The applicants will have the opportunity for rebuttal at the discretion of the chairperson. The floor will then be closed, and the board will go into executive session for discussion, a motion, and then a vote. Uh, as a reminder, four votes are required for approval. And, okay. All right, and the last point, Ms. Picotte, on behalf of the board, welcome. All right, the next item is the declaration by members of the board regarding any ex parte communications. There is a form in front of each of us that provides for the exportation dis- declaration disclosures. Ms. Kirkwood, if you could... Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Ms. Kirkwood, I'd ask if you would go through the roll, the members, and each of us will make our, any declaration and disclosure of ex parte communications.
Alfred Fields?
As to the matter, Alfred Fields have not had ex parte communication, have not received written communication, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Jonathan Burgess?
As to all matters before us today, I, Jonathan Burgess, have not had ex parte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions, I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Christopher Cammer?
As to the matters before the board today, I have not had ex parte communications with any of the applicants or related people, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted a, any investigation, I have not made a site visit, have not received any expert opinions, and I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Michael Hyman?
As to the matters before today, I have not had ex parte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site vis- visit, have not received expert opinions, and I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Dana Picotte?
As to matters before the board today, I have not had ex parte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received, received expert opinions, I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of that record.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the, the public hearing. I would ask, uh, Ms. Kirkwood to swear in anybody who is here to speak today.
Just for clarification, I believe Board Chairman, or, excuse me, Board Attorney Thomas will do the swearing-in, so.
Do each of you swear, or, or the testimony you gave will be truthful?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Kirkwood, if you could call the, there are no continued cases, if you could call the, the first case.
As requested by Anthony Barbary of R and B Constructions LLC, on behalf of ATB Management, for a variance from section nine-four dash three-one-two, two A, of the city's zoning and land development regulations, specifically relating to the required corner clearance of access points on non-thoroughfare roadways. The location, the subject property consisting of point sixteen acres is located at one-one-three-two Eleventh Street, within Commission District number three, Commissioner Christie Fox.
Okay, so the first said, ask the applicant to... Do you come to the, uh, podium, please?
Good afternoon. Name is Carlos, last name Ramirez. And I'm representing, uh, Mr. Anthony Barbary, I'm on behalf of R and B Constructions LLC. And, um, as you know, I'm presenting, uh, to the board of appeals, the case, uh, number three, four-zero-six, A, for a variance for a driveway on eleven thirty-two Eleventh Street. As you can see, this is our location right there. And, um, it's coming from, uh, Palm Beach Lakes and, uh, the intersection of Carver Ave and Eleventh Street. We have over here, I don't know.
Can we zoom in? It's okay.
You can use your, use the mouse.
Okay, as you can see, uh, in, in the survey, uh, we locate the driveway, uh, coming, uh, from Eleventh Street, right here. And we have a ten-foot by, uh, uh, twenty-eight feet wide, driveway, a location over here, it will not interfere with the traffic here and on Eleventh Street as well. We send out, uh, the forms, the affidavits, and also to every, uh, owner on the neighborhood. Um, as you can see as well, we, we did our due diligence, and also for the, um, each one of the, our neighbors in the area. This is the pictures, the structures, both structures are there. The one that you're seeing, uh, below over here is the one on Eleventh Street, and you can see it right here from the, this corner, the west side. And on the back is, uh, is the structure that is a mother-in-law. That will soon, we'll talk about that as well.
That was the end of the applicant presentation, he has both of them, so they were grouped together.
Do you, let me ask you, um, let me have the, the board ask any questions, they may have the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, Mr. Fields? No questions at this time. Mr. Hyman?
Thank you. The request is for, for two driveway, or what's the specific requirement?
The request is for, uh, this is a, a lot that it has, uh, a main house and a dwelling unit, mother-in-law. So, for Eleventh Street is one driveway. It's, it's, it's one driveway in Eleventh Street, but on the other address, that's eleven sixty-two, Carver, is another driveway, so both ha- has two driveways in the same property.
Two, two cases.
I'm not sure, what is the actual bearing, where are we bearing from, is your requesting today?
Um, I will clarify during my presentation, but, uh, this request is for the one driveway located to the northern, uh, property line. So, relate to the minimum corner clearance distance, as this, the proposed driveway does not meet that corner clearance.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Burgess?
Can you just touch on the traffic patterns heading northbound on Carver Avenue versus southbound, are they, is this kind of a called a, a, a single point of entry off of Palm Beach Lakes and coming around, or is there traffic likely coming? I'm, I'm worried, I'm wondering about the right-hand turn heading northbound on Carver onto Eleventh, if anyone's ever gonna really do that, or if most people come westbound on Eleventh and then out of the community. So, is there a, kind of looking out at the neighborhood, is a little bit, um, further away, i- is the, um, is there any ingress egress points on Carver south of us, or is everyone exiting north of us?
Um, I will clarify during that, I'll clarify that during my presentation as well, but, um, there are certain ingress egress points.
Ingress points, sorry.
Located along, um, Eleventh Street and Carver Avenue that would, people would be traveling into, but I will clarify during my presentation.
Okay, I'll wait, then, ask my question then for staff presentation, thank you.
Ms. Picotte? Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, I don't have any questions, so we want to now go to the city's presentation.
All right, good afternoon, my name is Alex Folks, I'm a planner with City of West Palm Beach Development Services. This is ZBA case number three-four-zero-six-A for a variance, um, for the driveway corner clearances to the property located at eleven thirty-two Eleventh Street. The subject property outlined in red here is approximately point one-six acres. Uh, it falls within the single-family high-density residential zoning designation, and the surrounding uses are primarily residential. Um, this site has been before the ZBA previously, as they received a Class B special use permit to build a single-family home and accessory apartment at the May fifth, twenty twenty-two ZBA meeting. Uh, here's that overhead photo that may give you a better idea of the traffic patterns in this neighborhood, so we can come back to that later in the presentation if you're, if necessary. So, the request, uh, the applicant is requesting a variance from section nine-four-three-twelve-two-A of this, of the ZLDRs, specifically relating to the, uh, required corner clearance of access points on non-thoroughfare roadways. So, code requires a minimum corner clearance distance of fifty feet. Now, that distance is measured from the edge of the driveway to the closest edge of the intersecting street. So, a forty-foot corner clearance is being proposed, therefore, the applicant is requesting a ten-foot or twenty percent variance from that required distance. The applicant has worked with staff to determine that the minimum requ- that this is the minimum request necessary to allow for the construction of a ten-foot driveway on the northern property line. So, here are some illustrations that may help, um, guide understanding of the, what is being proposed. So, on the left, you can see a full site plan for the property, and on the right is a survey of the property zoomed into the front of the lot where the subject driveway is to be placed. So, in order to meet the additional parking requirements for an accessory apartment, the applicant is proposing to place a ten-foot driveway on each street frontage, so one for the accessory apartment, one for the primary structure. Um, this is permitted, or such a driveway placement is, is permitted on residential corner lots, provided that they're, the combined width does not exceed twenty feet, and that they meet all the other, uh, code requirements, such as corner clearance. But as you can see on the right, the width of, or the distance from the east property line to the closest edge of Carver Avenue at the front of the lot is only fifty-three feet, so this would make it impossible for the applicant to place a driveway along this lot line and still meet this corner clearance requirement. So, if this variance were to be granted, the applicant would be able to place a ten-foot driveway setback three feet from the east side property line at the front of the lot, which would result in a corner clearance of forty feet. So, here are some photos of the site, taken from the front of the property where the driveway would be located, and across the intersection, um, in question. Here is a site video, also taken from the front of the property. All right, so as you can see, the area is primarily residential in character, therefore, there is much less traffic on these such roads than on other non-thoroughfare roads throughout the city, and drivers tend to be much slower, the speed limit here is twenty-five miles per hour going along Carver, and even less in, on Eleventh Street, and therefore, drivers tend to drive much slower and more carefully. Therefore, staff recommends approval based on the findings that the petition meets all the required variance standards found in section nine-four-three-eight-D-six of the city zoning and land development regulations. Thank you, be happy to answer any questions you have now.
Mr. Fields, do you have any questions?
Yes, with the, uh, variance being allowed of the, uh, uh, for forty feet instead of the fifty feet, uh, is there a, an allowance for any type of privacy fence to be put in that same area, and if so, what would be the height, because that would be my concern?
Actually, there already is a privacy fence in the area, um, it was along the...
On the west side of the building.
Along the west side of the building?
Yes.
So, there is not a privacy fence located on the west side of the building, um, we're talking about the portion that abuts Carver Avenue, correct?
Yes.
So, were a privacy fence to be installed in there, the maximum height would be six feet, except for the portion that extends into the front setbacks, that's gonna be the first twenty-five feet, uh, going from the front of the lot, so the northern part of the lot, uh, south, so in that front setback, uh, height could not exceed four feet.
So, I, I, and that poses the question in my concern, would I was giving up that additional ten feet and still allowing that same height might pose a problem?
Additionally, I should've said this, uh, there is a corner visibility requirement in the code, so anything located within, I believe it's a twenty-foot visibility triangle, uh, located all corner lots, I think it's eight inches is the maximum height, like a hedge could be, or, so you couldn't put a four-foot privacy fence in there. Then trees have to have a minimum of eight-foot, um, clear wood, uh, height, so before you reach the leaves. So, that twenty-foot visibility triangle is gonna be maintained in the future, no matter what they come in, what they come in for, for any permits or anything.
Okay, 'cause I know sometimes even with the speed limit being as low as it is on that particular road, cars tend to go a lot faster.
Understood.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hyman? Do you have any questions?
Thank you, you, I, I just have a, a, a question, a clarification, if you would. This property came in previously for an approval.
For a Class B special use permit, yes, so, uh, they previously came in for a, that Class B special use permit for the accessory apartment located in the back, I will zoom in, so you can see it.
Okay, so that's, but that special use permit didn't come before us, and, which is why the variance is now coming before us, but, but the variance was anticipated with the approval that they got for that special use permit, is that correct?
I wouldn't say that the variance was, we were anticipating granting approval.
Not the granting of the variance, but the need to come before us for the variance?
Yes, it was anticipated the applicant would come in and ask for this variance, as, like I said, it would be impossible to place a driveway along the northern street frontage, so.
So, when the special use permit was granted, though?
Correct.
The, 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 the granting was, was anticipating that the, the variance would follow and be approved, is that, is that a fair statement?
So, the granting of the special use permit only certified the ability to have that accessory apartment. The applicant still had the ability to come in and rework the site however they saw fit, if they did not want to come in for that variance, so the fact that we were anticipating them to come back for that variance did, should not have factored into the approval of the Class B special use permit.
Okay, so they say, so, I guess the follow-up would be, just for total clarification, when the special use permit was granted, there wasn't, there, there wasn't a need for this variance, but because of what they wanna do with the property, the gra- the need of the variance and coming before us today has occurred, and that's why we're here?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Yes, the Class B special use permit only certified the use of the property.
Mr. Burgess, do you have any questions?
Yes, um, and as a follow-up to my question for the applicant, I think zooming out on the neighborhood, um, I was able to confirm that Carver goes south to Seventh, so there is potential for northbound traffic to turn right on Eleventh Street more regularly. So, my question about that right-hand turn and the corner clearance visibility triangle that you mentioned before is, does shifting the driveway into the requested additional ten feet, um, create a conflict of a car potentially sitting in that site visibility triangle? Or is the site visibility triangle still clear of the western bout- proposed boundary of the driveway?
The site visibility triangle is still clear of that, of where the proposed driveway would be, so, the required visibility triangle by code, I'm gonna present from this slide, so we can see it a little more clearly. Um, we require a twenty-foot corner clearance, not corner clearance, a twenty-foot visibility triangle, so that extends from, given this is a curved lot, where those two lot lines would meet, twenty feet, uh, into the property. So, given that there's still forty feet from the, um, closest edge of Carver Avenue, a car sitting in here would not impede, um, site to the, or site onto Eleventh Street.
Great, yeah, so the, uh, any vehicles sitting in the driveway will still have to be mindful of the traffic coming up Carver when they back up onto Eleventh Street if they're potentially turning right, but if they abide by the code requirements for the site visibility triangle, you know, clear height for trees and maximum height for landscaping and fencing, then there shouldn't be a visibility concern for, uh, cars backing out, out of that driveway.
Correct, visibility is not a concern for this variance.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
No further questions, thank you.
Ms. Picotte, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, Mr. Burgess covered my questions, thank you.
Uh, I ju- I just have one, just theoretical question, or just basic question, is what is the need for the, the clearance in the first place? The, the fifty-foot clearance?
So, it's my understanding that the minimum corner clearance, so if you were to be going northbound on Carver Avenue and be turning onto Eleventh Street, is to ensure that if another car were to be doing that, and you were to turn in from, you'd be making that turn directly into the driveway, ensuring that there's enough stopping distance if you had a car. ensuring that there's enough stopping distance if you had a car directly behind you. So the reason that's not necessarily concerned here is because it's a residential street and it sees significantly less traffic, especially going onto Eleventh Street. So than other non thoroughfare roadways, so that isn't as big of an issue in this area.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions. Any other further questions by the board? Okay, thank you. Alright, doesn't look like we have any members of the public here to speak. Has the city received any notes or emails or letters from the public on, with regards to this case?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Alright. Does the applicant want to say anything in addition to what's already been presented?
No, no he doesn't.
Okay, alright, then we will go into executive session. Okay, Mr. Fields, do you have any comments? No. Mr. Hyman, any comments?
No sir, no comments.
Mr. Burgess, any comments?
No comments.
And Ms. Picotte, any comments?
No comments.
Okay, thanks. Alright, at that point, would a board member like to make a motion?
I believe that the zoning board of appeals grant zoning board of appeals case number four, thirty-four, zero, six, A. A request by Anthony Barberi of R and B Constructions LLC on behalf of A T B Management for a variance from section ninety-four dash three, twelve, two, A of the city zoning and land development regulations specifically relating to the minimum corner clearance of all access points required on non thoroughfare roadways. This motion is based on the testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in article two, section ninety-four dash thirty-eight, D six of the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Second motion.
Okay, Ms. Kirkwood, could you call the, the role for the vote on the motion?
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Christopher Cameron?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan? Excuse me. Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Dana Picotte?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is approved, the application is approved. Takes us to the next case, and it's the same applicant, I believe, case number three, four, oh, seven, A. Ms. Kirkwood, could you read into the, the record what the request is for?
A request by Anthony Barberi of R and B Constructions LLC on behalf of A T B Management for a various, variance from section nine, four, three, one, two, two, A of the city's zoning and land development regulations, specifically relating to the required corner clearance of access points on non thoroughfare roadways. The location, the subject property consisting of point fourteen acres is located at one, zero, two, seven, Eighth Street with commission district number three, Commissioner Christie Fox.
Okay, so could the applicant make their presentation, please?
Yes, I'm presenting the variance zoning board to appeals, the case number thirty-four, zero, seven, eight, on behalf, Anthony Barberi and R and B Constructions. My name again is Carlos Ramirez. And the address that we are requesting this variance is ten, twenty-seven on A Street. As you can see right there is the location physically. This is where the driveway is going to be located on A Street in this property. It's an, it's an end corner lot. This is proof of documentations that, that we sent out to neighbors, affidavit and police notice mail affidavit as well. This is the pictures of the property. This one in the middle is ten, twenty-seven. This is the area where the proposed driveway will be located. And this is the, the mother and little suite of the wheeling unit on the back. And that's it.
Okay, so in this, the city will follow, can you put the, the, the map up again? I, I think it was here for this property, just so the board can see.
This one?
The di, sorry, the diagram as to what the proposal is. Yeah, it's lower than, it's the next one down.
The site line?
Yeah.
Oh, that one here.
That one, right, okay. Okay, so. Mr. Fields, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No question, but if we can hear from staff first and maybe I have a question afterwards, please.
Okay, Mr. Hyman, do you have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Burgess, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, on the, on the northern driveway, is, is that, which driveway is requesting the variance, the south one or the north one?
The southern driveway.
Southern driveway.
The one in question.
Okay, the northern one, I was just going to have a question about the, any proposed conflict with the existing tree along the right of way. But that's not requesting a variance and it doesn't appear that there's any impacted vegetation along the southern driveway. So I don't have any questions for the applicant, thank you.
Ms. Picotte, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Not at this time.
Alright, I don't have any questions at this time, so if the city wants to make its presentation, thank you.
Alright, good afternoon, Alex Fokes, I am planner, City of West Palm Beach Development Services. This is Z B A case number three, four, zero, seven, A, again for variance, this time located at ten, twenty-seven, Eighth Street. The subject prox, the subject property is approximately point one four acres. The zoning is a single-family high-density residential and the surrounding uses are primarily residential as well. This property also received a class B special use permit at the May fifth, twenty-twenty-two Z B A meeting to build a single-family home and an accessory apartment. The request is quite similar to the previous case. It's by the same applicant on behalf of A T B Management for variance from section nine, four, three, twelve. Again, for the required corner clearance of access points on non thoroughfare roadways. Code still requires a minimum corner clearance, corner clearance distance of fifty feet. And this distance is measured from the nearest edge of the driveway to the closest edge of the intersecting street. This time a forty-five foot corner clearance is being proposed. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a five foot or ten percent variance to this requirement. The applicant has worked with staff to determine that this is the minimum request necessary to allow for the construction of a ten foot driveway. Again, here are some illustrations of the request. On the left you can see the full site plan for the property, including the, the driveway in question to the south. And on the right you can see a survey of the property zoomed into the southern property line where the driveway in question is to be placed. Once again, in order to meet the additional parking requirements for their accessory apartment, the applicant is proposing to place a ten foot driveway on each street frontage. And as you can see on the right, the distance from the eastern property line to the closest edge of Windsor Avenue is fifty-eight feet, which would again make it impossible to place a driveway of reasonable size at the front of the property. If this variance were to be granted, the applicant would be able to place a ten foot driveway setback three feet from the east side property line at the front of the lot, resulting in a corner clearance of forty-five feet. Here are some photos of the site taken from the front of the property and across the intersection of Eighth Street and Windsor Avenue. Here is a video taken from the front of the property. So as you can see, the area is primarily residential in character. It is in the same neighborhood as the previous case. And therefore there is significantly less traffic than on other non thoroughfare roads. Eighth Street also ends in a dead end where you would be turning into the driveway, which further limits the amount of traffic at this intersection. So staff is recommending approval based on the findings that the petition meets all the required variance standards of the city of West Palm Beach, Z L D Rs. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any, any questions you might have.
Mr. Fields, do you have any questions of the city?
No questions, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Hyman, do you have any questions?
Just one observation or a question regarding my observation. The buildings that you showed us in your, in the video that you, that you took are the actual homes under construction that are requiring the driveways, is that correct? Or have the homes been built, have, have the homes been built yet that are a tenant to the, the request?
I don't know if construction is yet complete on the homes, maybe the applicant could speak to, no?
Completion's not my question, it's the start. Are, are those the buildings that were shown?
Yes, those are the buildings that were shown.
Just, can I make a comment during my remarks? It would seem to me that we don't have the opportunity to look at an alternative placement of the driveway because they've taken the special use permit, built the homes and coming into us at this point for the variance on the only location now that the driveways can have.
That is correct. The applicant was given a building permit for the houses as the primary structures themselves didn't meet the, or did meet all the code requirements. So there was no issues with the structures. However, the applicant was made aware that this would be an issue both at the Z B A meeting and through the permit process. So they have chosen to design the site in such a way and have brought this variance forward.
So are you saying that, that the building department and the, and the approval of the plans doesn't include the construction of a driveway and its location relative to setbacks and everything else?
So when we look at permits, there are separate permits done for, permit for structures, for driveways, for fences. They're all separate reviews and they bring in all the necessary departments. So you're going to see more reviews done on a structural permit than you are on a driveway permit. So on a driveway permit, I believe it's only done by zoning and engineering, the only ones that look at that, so they are all separate permits.
For the record, John Rich, principal planner, what Alex is indicating is correct, is that the house was issued in essence at risk. From the standpoint of the applicant knows that a separate permit is required for the driveway. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the conversation that occurred with regards to the special use permit and whether or not the driveway was included and we emphasize that it was not.
I apologize I wasn't here at that, at the meeting.
And, and that the locations shown on the plan were subject to the granting of a variance and that if a variance was not granted, that, that they would have to come up with an alternative. So the applicant's been made aware from the beginning, you know, before they started construction, that this process was necessary and that, you know, if they weren't granted the variance, that they'd, they'd have to come up with an alternative that met code.
Good luck with that. I, I apologize for taking up the board's time on this issue that's obviously been, been talked through and understood. And it just seems a little bit strange to me that, you know, we, we have no, I mean, the alternative is not to have a driveway. Or I don't know where else on the, on the lot it would fit without the, the need for the variance. Whereas I can see that had, had the driveway been included initially, there might have been an alternative that didn't require a variance.
I, I think there's alternatives there that could have been explored, however, to provide a separate driveway for the residents versus a separate driveway for the accessory structure, the variance was necessary and therefore before you. But it's not to say that there weren't any alternatives.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I'll point out in an instance like this, the schedule the applicant chose to use in terms of his construction is his choice. But that does not control your decision. Your decision is whether the evidence presented meet the requirements for granting a variance. And if it does, they are entitled to it. If it doesn't, you deny it. If it's denied, it's up to the applicant to decide how to proceed. But what they've chosen to do doesn't control your decision here today. With all due respect, Sam, with, with the exception that we now have, we set a precedent with the previous petition and find ourselves in the same position with this one, I think. Fair statement? Well, I tend to differ about precedents. Each case rides on its own merits. And you can make your decision on each case based on evidence presented in that case. If, for example, you make a decision in one case that you later think perhaps you shouldn't have made, you're not then obligated to make that same mistake in the next case. So you make your decision based on evidence presented in each case. Thank you.
Mr. Burgess, do you have any questions of the city?
I do. So I'm curious, the, the measurement that establishes in this case the forty-five foot setback is based on the edge of travel lane is what it looks like. And if there were right-of-way improvements that pushed maybe the curb closer to the property line, would the applicant have to come back for future improvements for an additional variance? If the, and I'm, I'm just curious why the travel, edge of travel lane is used to determine the setback and not the property line?
If you could elaborate, are you saying?
Yeah, so the forty-five foot dimension between the western edge of the proposed driveway and the eastern edge of the valley, two foot, a two inch, whatever that is, F curb, it seems to indicate the edge of travel lane, whereas the property line is on the rear end of the sidewalk, the eastern edge of the sidewalk. So the forty-five foot setback is taken from kind of an arbitrary construction line based on the existing conditions. And if there were proposed improvements in the right-of-way, would that all of a sudden then make this lot non-conforming?
Thank you, John.
For the record, John Rich, just like any roadway improvements or if they were to even widen the roadway, you know, the right-of-way or anything like that, in those instances where a, an existing improvement is in place and a future improvement to the roadway creates the non-conformity, it would automatically be grandfathered in. They wouldn't have to come back and relocate the driveway or request an additional variance or anything like that. What's before you is the variance given the existing conditions, that's how the code is requiring the, the corner clearance to be calculated is from the existing curb line. There is no ultimate curb line or anything like that. So all we have to, to evaluate before you is the existing conditions. And any roadway improvements, if they were to create a non-conformity, would, would be grandfathered in.
Okay, yeah, I just, I was curious why that dimension is set from the travel lane and not of the legal boundary.
The thing to keep in mind is that the fifty foot dimension that it's required is applicable to all non thoroughfare roadways in the city. That's dead-end residential streets with four lots, that's, you know, Flagler Drive, you know, on the south end, you know, that stretches for a mile. You know, it's, there's a variety of roadway sizes, classification, speeds or what have you that, that, that fifty foot clearance is applicable to. That's why we're evaluating these on a case-by-case situation in which it's a pretty, you know, small neighborhood in which these properties are located. And the amount of traffic is, is minimal. And therefore we, you know, we feel that there's not an issue with having these driveways slightly closer to the, the curb line than what you would find in, in other non thoroughfare roadways.
Thank you.
Ms. Picotte, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, I don't have any questions either, so doesn't look like there's any members of the public here. Any letters, texts from the public? No?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Does the applicant wish to make any further statements?
No.
Okay, thanks, then we'll just go into executive session. Uh, Mr. Fields, any, any comments regards to the application?
Uh, just a, a comment in general. Um, uh, Mr. Hyman brought out a concern that I had, and I think we discussed it when it came before us before. And our hands are kinda tied to the sense where, you know, we gotta judge it based on what's being requested and if it meets those, those standards. Uh, and I think it's, it's hard to not have this same feeling that we're put in a situation where we should even been brought back for this particular variance because it probably should have been done all at the same time. Uh, so I just wanted to be known for the record, I, I concur with Mr. Hyman and his comment that, you know, this should have probably been, uh, addressed in all at one time because, you know, it meets the requirement, has met the requirements then, we could have just avoided this whole process. But, uh, those are my comments as well, thank you.
Mr. Hyman, any comments?
I just appreciate Alex's comments and I think that, you know, that we can do, there should be something done relative to this process when we see something like this, that it just should, you know, knowing that it has to come back and that, and that the location of the driveway could conceivably be in a situation where it may or may not work, um, at least getting the applicant to understand that in the future, I guarantee you, if this happens again, then I'll be voting against it, okay? We, we voted for the first one and I feel compelled to, to vote for the second one affirmatively. But I'm not going willingly, okay? Um, and I just think it's, it's serious enough that with these infill lots in particular, that we're gonna continue to see this. And it's, it's just not right when there's an alternative and staff would know that perhaps more than some of the petitioners that come in before us. And I'd like you guys to comment on that, you know, at the point in time when we get the first shot at it. And to be able to say, we're gonna put this off until we see the whole package.
Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. Burgess, any comments?
Yeah, and I'll just highlight too that the location of this proposed driveway is setback further from the eastern property line than the five-foot setback. So it's centered on the architecture of the building, um, but it, it isn't as close to the property line as it possibly could be further east, thereby minimizing the five-foot variance to a lower variance.
So I've, I could comment on that.
Please.
Um, the site plan to the left, you are correct, it does not show the, um, does not reflect the variance that we're granting. That was just to, that was what was provided at the start of this application by the applicant and to help provide a visual of what we were, uh, proposing with this variance. So the variance that is being proposed is the minimum request necessary. So setback forty-five feet will allow for a ten-foot driveway, setback three feet, which is the minimum setback required by code. So that was determined with my assist, with the applicant and my assistants. So this is the minimum request necessary.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. The diagram on the left is an older version of what's being proposed now.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
No comments.
Okay, I don't have any comments. Any, um, is there a motion with regards to this application?
I move that the zoning board of appeals, grant zoning board of appeals case number three, four, zero, seven, A, a request by Anthony Barberia of R and B Constructions LLC on behalf of ATB Management for a variance from section ninety-four dash three, one, two, two, A of the city's zoning and land development regulations, specifically relating to the minimum corner clearance of all access points required on non-thoroughfare roadways. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the applicant, application submitted and staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the criteria in Article Two, Section ninety-four dash three, eight, D six of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Mr. Fields made the motion, seconded by Mr. Burgess. Ms. Kirkwood, could you call the roll for the vote on the application?
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Christopher Kramer?
Yes.
Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Dana Picant?
Yes.
Okay, so the votes are in favor of the motion, it passes. So congratulations to the applicant. Here's, there's no other items of business on our unfinished business, administrative bills, no new business or other business. We can move to adjournment unless anybody has any other comments on the board that they'd like to discuss.
Just to the, the earlier, um, discussion at executive session about what to do when presented with a systemic, uh, you know, occasion that comes up often. Under new business, we could theoretically ask staff to look into potential code modifications or things and bring it back before the board for discussion under the new business item if we wanted to take advantage of that opportunity in the future.
Sure, um, is that, I'll just ask, is Mr. Thomas or Mr. John whether it's something we do now or we put on the agenda for the next session with regards to what Jonathan is suggesting?
And, and I apologize, I didn't quite understand what your request, or your question is.
I was just reminding the board that under new business, we could instruct staff to help research and clarify certain systemic issues we see in the existing code for proposed staff-driven ordinance changes or code revisions. Um, that would be our opportunity to bring those discussions up outside of any particular application.
You could make that request, say if it pertained to, uh, the agenda for today, uh, this would be an appropriate time to make that request to staff. Staff would then have to review that and decide on the appropriate way to proceed.
Okay, so, it sounds like what we do, we'd make it a, we'd just do a agenda and we'll have a discussion and I guess we would take a vote on it as a suggestion to the board or to the, the city. Sounds like what we should do, Sam, is that correct?
I would think, considering time, I, I would imagine you wouldn't wanna take a lot of time at the end of this agenda then to get into a long discussion about a new item. So you would wanna contact staff and have them add it so that it's a part of the, uh, consideration.
Okay.
Sam, um, do we have the ability to go into executive session or workshop session in order to talk to, like, about something like this and get here at one thirty, I mean, at one o'clock or, or at, uh, you know, twelve-thirty, whatever, to have that time? You could have that placed on an agenda, say at a future meeting, uh, so that it takes place at this regular time since we would assume that everyone has kinda cleared their schedule to be here at this time. Exactly. So that you would inform staff in advance so that that's added to the agenda and everybody would make appropriate time. I think Jonathan's, um, suggestion is absolutely relevant and, and necessary because of what we were faced with previously and today. I, you know, I'm somewhat offended by it, I will tell you that.
John? If I could respond and Mr. Thomas can correct me if I'm wrong, you know, I think that there is consensus to discuss a particular item with regards to the code. You know, if there's variances that are repetitive in terms of you see them on a frequent basis and you think it's necessary to evaluate the zoning code. You know, if there's consensus amongst the board and you can make that request, that staff come back at a future meeting, you know, with an evaluation of that, of that text change or of that provision of the code. Um, the one thing to keep in mind is that any changes to the code would go to the planning board and the city commission for their ultimate approval. However, you know, if, if your discussion pertains to, you know, you've seen X number of cases that relate to a certain particular topic and you think that it's worthy of discussion, we can, we can certainly do that with respect to, you know, the, the time necessary to do that research and bring it back. Um, but ultimately, you know, moving forward with any change to the code based upon that discussion would be the planning board and city commission.
So, so let me ask, I think what I heard from you, Jonathan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. What I sort of understood you and, and Michael were suggesting is that not so much with regards to particular sections of the code, um, but more to the extent that there is a property that required multiple variances, that they all come to us at one time. Because what I'm getting the sense from, from Michael is that he would like to have those all heard before we, we vote on one and then it just seems as if the others have to follow because we've already approved one variance. If, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're suggesting?
Yeah, from my perspective, I brought up the opportunity to discuss things outside of individual applications together as a zoning board of appeals in the new business item if it's added to the future agenda. So this would be our opportunity to discuss whether there are specific code sections that need to be, uh, discussed in real-world applications that we see coming back before us or if there's, uh, process issues or things, there's conversations that we could have outside of these individual case numbers that may be productive, um, on behalf of the city. And, and I, and I'd encourage us to take advantage of that more often if we see some of these things come up.
Okay, so would you like to add that to the next meeting's agenda and the city?
Yeah, I mean, out of fairness, you know, so that it's advertised as part of the agenda, people are aware that this is a, an item, you know, whatever the topic is, that it's going to be discussed by the board. You know, out of fairness, I would request that, you know, anything coming from the board that it be, the direction be given to put it on a future agenda um, so that we can include it in as a part of that notification, so. And then it's, it's clear as to what the board is planning to discuss, you know, as part of that, that item, so. And I'm happy to clarify process a little bit. If, if you wanna have that discussion, I can, you know, talk about it now or if that is the item that you wanna discuss in the future, I'm happy to do it then.
That's, process is, is sort of the item that I got from Jonathan and Michael, I think.
I think there's a conceptual flaw in, you know, in the way we're, way it's being operated, you know?
The unique thing about today's agenda was that, and, and the previous applications, is that one of them, the previous application was a special use permit, which was different than a variance. And they're independent of one another, they have no bearing on one another. Um, the special use permit was purely to allow an accessory apartment on a lot of forty feet in width, as opposed to the, um, well, approximately forty feet, you know, given the specific lots individually. But it was to, to waive the lot width requirement of sixty feet that is necessary for an accessory apartment. That's the only thing that was in consideration for the zoning board of appeals when those special use permits came forward. As part of that conversation, there was a lot of discussion about other things, including the driveways. And as part of those conversations, it was emphasized that the driveways were not a part of the application that was before you at that time and that the applicant, you know, requested to move forward with the special use permit. In addition to that, then moving forward with construction of that accessory apartment that was approved was with the understanding, and I used the term earlier, at-risk and from the standpoint of they knew that they either had to meet code or they had to request a variance with the risk that the zoning board of appeals may not grant the variance. And if that's the case, they have to address those issues. So the construction of the, of the buildings was with the understanding that either the variance is approved or they find an alternative. And, and that was their risk. And then, you know, Mr. Thomas emphasized today that the item before you today was purely the driveways, irregardless of, you know, accessory apartments or anything else, so.
You just described it a little bit.
I understand that, that one kind of intertwines with the other. However, we have to evaluate them independently, understanding that doing so, there, there's risk to the, to the applicant. From the standpoint of if one's approved and the other one's not, then that could potentially be an issue, but that's a risk.
So, uh, just to, to go a little bit deeper in this, and I know again, we're kinda getting a little deeper than we wanted to. But, uh, when it comes back before us and staff has, uh, looked and said it's met pretty much all of the, the standards for variance, um, I, I guess that draws into question, uh, our interpretation of did they meet those variances? And if so, um, if not, uh, then we can deny this, this request. Uh, so I guess the understanding and getting a better understanding of that process and seeing that process from beginning to end, uh, is, is where we are because we've caught, you know, do we have an applicant now put in, in a greater hardship because, yeah, we approved the initial, uh, request and now we are saying we don't agree with what we didn't agree with when we saw the initial, uh, request based on the, the, uh, what was presented?
And I would say it's no different than, and it happens a lot more with planning board and city commission of big development projects that have conditions of approval that go along with them, right? You know, we're, we're recommending approval subject to the applicant doing X, Y, and Z. You know, the applicant could always find out that they're unable to do X, Y, and Z. Well, like, again, that's kind of an at-risk type of thing where if they can't meet those obligations, then they potentially have to come back to the board or, you know, alter their project accordingly to accommodate. So it's the same, same kind of, kind of thing as to moving forward with a risk that certain items need to be addressed.
So that, that gives me a little bit more to work with then. Maybe we should look more to putting more conditions on those approvals when we see something coming down the road and what are our ranges? And I guess that's a workshop we may need to have to discuss what are our options as far as those conditions. And I think that's where we're kinda...
And really by default, I mean, the, the special use permit was grant, in essence granted with the condition that they meet the code with regards to the driveway. If they don't, then they have a right to request that variance, but there is no guarantee that the variance is approved. So, you know, the fact that that, the code requires that they had to meet it or as in any project, you know, request the variance accordingly.
The only, the, the only bullet we have in this situation, it would seem to me, is to deny our piece of the special use permit regardless of how many other places it needs to go. If that needs to bring it, if that's what we have, then we have to take that shot and deny it until such time as they come back and show us a site plan that has a driveway that's properly, you know, acceptable. Um, even though it may be an alternative to what they're thinking, they've gotta, they've gotta rethink the thing.
Well, well, that's the thing Mr. Thomas is gonna emphasize of, any denial of the special use permit has to be based upon the special use standards, so.
Well, then we need to, and, okay, and what's this, I guess, and I apologize again for not being here, but what, what is the, what is the limitation to looking at the standards and, and doing something there? I mean, are these standards that we, that have been imposed by, um, the adoption of, of the zoning code?
Yes.
So that there needs to be a change to that relative to, uh, how we can, what, I mean, if we're building, if we're building blocks that, that make up all of this and they're, and they're, they have no power to them and we can't control what it is that needs to be controlled in our opinion and from our standpoint, how, how do, how do we correct that? And is that, is that what we need to look at for, for a workshop as to what it is and what's wrong with it? I mean, who's got that say, the city commission? You can make recommendations for changes in the zoning code that you think would be beneficial based on the work you do here. But that's a recommendation. It would then have to be considered by the other boards. I think John mentioned the planning board and ultimately the final decision is up to the city commission as to whether it wishes to accept those recommendations. Uh, in instances like this...
Uh, in instances like this, you want to keep in mind that, uh. And as we've often discussed, these are quasi judicial hearings.
That was my question.
And you consider the issue before you. You're not charged with designing a project. You're charged with considering the issue presented to you today. And you make your decision based on the standards the code has set for making that decision. And you make that decision. If that results in a hardship to an applicant, that's of course the applicant has chosen to take. You simply look at it from the perspective of the code. You determine if it meets those standards or not, and then base your decision on that. And that really is the limit of what you do here as this board. Now, if you see things that would be of benefit to the city, that is the point at which you could make those recommendations. If you see things that could be changed in the code, you can make that recommendation. And that could then follow in the appropriate course for adoption. Uh, but you are not required to design a project, you're required simply to consider that matter that's before you today. Based on the standards that's presented in the code.
And the appeal, and the appeal board that, that follows a negative, uh, result from this, this board is, is the fourth district court of appeal?
Circuit court.
Circuit court.
Yes.
And, and the other thing to throw into that is that the applicant is entitled to due process from the standpoint of. If we receive an application and it meets the criteria to move forward and so forth, you know, we have to process that application.
Understood.
And it has to come before the board, so. You know, the decision of the board is obviously, you know, what was just discussed. But we can't say, no, we're not taking your special use permit because we have this unrelated or, you know, um, other application. That could potentially be, you know, needed in the future.
And just added to, to John's point, which is a critical one. In effect, we have as a city notified the public based on what's in the code. That this is how your project will be considered. So we are bound to consider it in accordance with the provisions in the code. And that's why we kind of emphasize the fact that you've got to review it on the basis of standards. Because that's what's published to the world, when you design, you do it based on what's in the code. And when you come before a board, it'll be evaluated based on those standards. If those are to change once again, then you certainly should make recommendations and, in the process of approval, it can be considered.
Yes, sir.
So at the end, what, what I'm hearing is, I think the board would like to consider projects holistically with everything, so they. And that's what I hear, and I understand from the city's perspective, there's some problems with that. A, that's difficult to do, to get a, everything arranged at the same time and to identify anything that may come up at the same time. And separately, that each of these items are a separate matter for each applicant, that they, the applicant has a right to make the application on. So that's, I think, the, the dilemma we have.
And it becomes a hard pill to swallow when we've got these standards and the sta, and I, Sam, you know, I get that, okay? Same my first rodeo, but it's, but i- it's frustrating, okay? That, that that lays the groundwork for the next thing that we're locked in, sort of locked in place to, to do. And, and it just, you know, it exacerbates the, the issue. But I absolutely understand, you know, the, the standards that we have to work with. But, you know, we also, you know, need to start maybe denying, you know, those things that are, that are, that are frustrating. Or at least, um, maybe, maybe, maybe putting them to the, to the side, um, you know, till we get more information, so. We have to work with the tools that we have pre- presented to us.
Okay. Well, no, I think this was, this was a helpful discussion. I guess it's a real question now, do we want to add a separate agenda item in the, in the future meeting or not?
So I would assume that staff has already indicated some sections of the code that may need to be revisited. Uh, that could benefit our interpretation of cases in the future. And perhaps we could benefit from a presentation of items already being workshopped, um, uh, for future revisions. Um, and we can add to tho, uh, to those items, any list of repe- repeating issues that we see over and over again. Which may lead to a recommendation to the planning board and the city commission for a future code revision outside of individual cases. So we're being reactive, but also proactive on, um, issues that we identify, um, that relate to the purview and the interpretation of the code.
I, I just want to clarify that you, in, in that statement, correct me if I'm wrong, that you said that staff had identified provisions of the code that needed to be addressed. Based upon applications before the board?
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're starting to identify things that we're seeing over and over again, um, on, on this dais. I am at, I would think that staff is also aware of things that come before you're at, you over and over again. That we could bring up as a list of things to talk about. So it's staff initiated.
Formally, I could say, I could name some of them, but we have not compiled a list of all the cases, you know, in the last five years or what have you. That have come before the ZBA and said, you know, there's been three of these and two of these and these need to be looked at and these don't. Um, so that formal analysis and that tracking has not been done. And I mean, if that's, and again, back to our original, how we got to where we are right now with the conversation. If that's the desire of the board, you can put that on a future agenda, but staff would need the time and notice to, to do that research and prepare accordingly.
Well, let's ask Mr. Burgess, if you want to, to make a proposal for a agenda.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Green as well.
Sorry.
If I could, Mr. Chair, Rick Green, Development Services Director, we'll, we'll be happy to do that if that's the pleasure of the board. Um, I just wanted to reiterate, remind the board that obviously there are other factors that we need to consider. We have a comprehensive plan that we follow, we have a strategic plan, um, that's inherent in a lot of the work we do. Using the example of the two cases you heard today back in May, again, these were two vacant lots. And now with the development of housing on these two lots, we're going to have an additional two to four units within the city. Which I presume are probably going to be within the workforce range. And that's something that we have been working on the last two or three years, so. I, I would just encourage the board to keep in mind that we have to look at the big picture too. And this was an opportunity that we could replace two vacant lots with up to possibly four additional units. In the future, as we go forward, if you identify any provisions of the code that you would like us to look at, um, we certainly can do that. We have regular discussions with our planning board on code revision, uh, changes. Um, we do a lot of that in our downtown because it's a form-based code, a lot more complex. We try to react to the market with all the development that's going on sometimes, you know. The, the code doesn't fit for everything we do, um, and that's why we have this whole process of waivers and variances to allow for deviations. And in the case of projects that go to the, to the planning board and city commission, we have planned developments where that flexibility is built into the system. But certainly if you've got something you would like us to look at, we'll be happy to do that.
Well, I thi, and I think more broadly speaking, I hate to speak for Mr. Burgess, but what, the way I interpret it is more broadly. We look at cases that are brought to us case by case basis. And perhaps having an agenda item just, and we can term it whatever we can come up with. But it helps to inform us as board members, the, the big picture you see, so we can evaluate that and then perhaps address items. And it could be an agenda item, just like discussion of big picture or whatever we term it as. And it allows a discussion, so perhaps the board members have a better focus on where the city is coming from, how the city views these. Because you raise all the issues you just raised, Mr. Green. It allows us to understand that as part of, not that it impacts a particular case, but it allows us to understand better how these cases fit into the overall city view.
Rick, I, we, we understand that your, your vision and your need is, is much broader than, than our, you know, our looking down the straw that we, that we do. We're just trying to, to have a holistic approach to what it is we do. You know, with that information and tie, and try and tie our piece of it all together. So that there's not a, you know, a Palm Beach County term of hanging, hanging chat out there that, that doesn't fit. Or is pushed into a, a, you know, someplace where it doesn't belong and creates a possible safety issue or anything else. So, you know, it's, it's just frustrating, I think, for us having to be, you know, not really happy with the outcome of a, of a situation. And I think, if I might, just from a, a staff standpoint and, and from a presentation standpoint. I think that it's really going to be more beneficial for us as much as possible. If we have the, the petitioner himself here, in, you know, at least in the audience, not just a representative. Who, who's making the best effort in, on behalf of that person. I mean, I just, you know, there is, there was something lacking here today in the, in the explanation from the, from the petitioner's side of the, of, of the equation, if you will, okay?
They say that the three things that people fear most in life, death came in third, public speaking is number one. So we can encourage the applicant to attend, we can't force them, but we'll, we'll try our best in the future.
So, Ed, Mr. Burgess, was there a, do you want to propose an agenda item for the new business?
Well, I think it's in, under new business or other business, there's nothing specifically that comes to mind today related to this issue that I need to workshop. Uh, but I wanted to just bring it to our collective attention that there is this section on our agenda every month. That we could talk about things outside of a case by case thing if we wanted to make recommendations for the bigger picture.
And I think that's a good idea, that's something to take advantage of and for us to think about. Okay, very good. Well, if we could, then, along that lines then, because I think all of it hinges on whether the, the, uh, standards, variance standards are met. If we can have some insight on staff's, uh, position and how they come up with saying some of those variances are, are, those standards are met. You know, because we get a report and it's, every standard is met and we're reading through about it, I'm reading through it and I'm like, hmm. There, there is some where you're like, maybe it's, you know, right down the line. So maybe a discussion about how staff views and how staff comes up with, uh, their, uh, declaration on whether a standard has been met. Will be helpful as a board for us to discuss and so we can have a better piercing into staff and what staff is looking at and what they're thinking and how. I think a discussion along those lines would be helpful.
And we're certainly, you know, willing to have that global discussion, you know, how we look at standards and, you know, determine whether or not an application complies or not, does not comply. But I also challenge the board not to hesitate that if you have a question about a particular standard. Or how staff responded to a standard within their report or presentation, that don't hesitate to ask as part of the board discussion on that particular case. You know, staff's position and, and response.
I think the critical point on the standards now is that it's your decision as to whether they are met. As opposed to staff's or the applicant's. You actually make that final decision on meeting standards. And you're entitled to ask any question you wish of anyone who's opined on it as to whether it's met. But it's really your decision as to whether the standard is met.
Can I just, I'm sorry. Sam, if I'm sitting here and I'm, I'm a negative vote, okay? Just to, I have to, I have to state my reasons for being opposed to that, okay? Whereas if I'm voting in favor of it, I don't have to state my reasons that I'm voting in favor of it. Is that, is, is that necessary for the, for the record that, uh, those opposing it have to be, you know, intimidated into saying exactly why? They feel that things aren't done as opposed to saying why you're voting for it?
What, what you do here affects property interests. And as you know, property interests are constitutionally protected. So when you take an action that deny what might otherwise be a right. The law, due process requires that you articulate the reason for that denial. In that instance, the person who has received that denial would then know why or what, if they choose, they would appeal to the circuit court. So that's the reason you articulate the reason for denial, because you're denying a, an otherwise property interest.
But am I, am I wrong when, if, I'm not talking about making a motion to deny, okay? I'm talking about voting against a, a motion to, to approve. I, as an individual, am asked to justify that, why are you voting against it, one vote, okay?
Well, not as an individual, if the board, if a majority of the board votes to deny.
I understand that part.
That is when the reasons for denial have to be articulated.
I understand that, but I've sat here and voted against something and I was asked, you know, why, you have to state your reason for voting against it? Is that, I'm asking you, you know, in your legal, in your legal opinion, is that something that I'm required to do, looking for guidance, if you will?
It's the collective decision.
That's, that's what I would think.
Yeah, that.
And that's, and that would be in the form of the motion that's made to deny it.
If the board denies the application, then the reasons for that denial will have to be articulated.
But if I'm sitting here, I don't have to give.
But if you as an individual voted, but the vote is for approval.
Yeah.
That person's rights have not been affected and it doesn't affect them.
Okay, even though if I vote first and I may affect someone else's thought, that they were on the, on the border as to which way go.
Well, it's the final vote that counts.
So, so, so if the vote.
That person's rights have been, not been denied.
If the vote to deny, to do, to, if the vote to approve is voted down.
That's a denial.
Okay, but you don't know it's denied, you don't know it's been denied because the, the motion was to approve. And so there's no, who, that's, that for me is somewhat of a dilemma that, and I don't mean to exacerbate this, this whole conversation into, you know, dinner time. But, um, you know, I, I just, I, I just need clearance on that.
I, I think the, the concern is, is that even if there is a motion by the board to approve the application.
Yep.
If there are insufficient votes to pass that motion for approval. Then in essence, it's a denial of the application. And we, for legal purposes, need to know the basis of that de facto denial. And that's the reason we, we frequently ask.
And most importantly, the applicant needs to know.
Yeah.
Because that's the basis on which if they chose, they would take it to the circuit court.
And there's been instances, not the zoning board of appeals, where applications were denied. The reasons for the denial were not stated and the applicant challenged and actually won. So that's the reason we've always gotten more structured with the motions and, and the, the votes. And, you know, if you are recommending, or if you are motioning to deny and so forth of, of putting into the record the specifics of those circumstances.
I understand, I understand. This has been a great discussion, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. Any other issues anybody would like to raise or move to an adjournment? Okay, a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All right. Do we take a vote?
I don't think we normally do, but some board, some boards do.